Let's go ahead and get started. I'll call this Board of Selectmen meeting to order on Friday, June 12th. Just a reminder that the meeting is being recorded. We do have participants joining us remotely in a town council. So Ed is on the phone and Deb Dunlap. That's all that's on here. If anybody else should join us, I will let you all know. Why don't we just jump right into new business? And I do have an update on the outdoor seating requests and approvals. And Jay just called Jerry to just double check that there isn't anybody that we're missing. So so far paperwork has been submitted. Sites have been inspected and they have been approved for outdoor seating at Forest Park Country Club, The Grind, AJ's, Pine Brook Pub, and Pizza House. In the work that Jerry's working with Bounty Fair and the Viking to just go forward with their plan. You don't know if there's anything you wanted to add from your conversation?
For clarity, and just speaking with Jerry, Bounty Fair has a similar issue as Forest Park Country Club. So they are, they are as of right now, okay to operate table service. And apparently this is kind of a split well at Forest Park where the local liquor license says okay to serve patio, but there's no verification that that's the version that was sent to ABCC. So in their eyes, they have legal authority to do it. In the town's eyes, they have legal authority to do it. But it's just another one of those administrative corrections that we have to make like at the agency. I was not aware of that until I spoke with Jerry. So I'm just going to lay this information. But that should not hamper them from, from operating.
But that process is moving forward? It has been going well from what Jerry said?
My understanding, I did go into Daily Grind yesterday for dinner. I spoke with the proprietor Nancy and Ben. They were very happy with the opportunity for table service. They've been very happy with the information that we've been providing. They were very happy with Mark and Jerry's service. And they thanked me for patronage and for the town's support for the business. And in fact, Donna had a conversation with them in terms of the availability for the, any of the small business funding that we've been able to funnel through, which hasn't been that much. And they said, no, they've actually been doing really well. They'd like to leave that pot of money available for other businesses. So it was nice to hear some positive feedback.
Now, Daily Grind, they're sort of on don't profit, correct?
Armor and report evidence now.
Yes.
However, all the, all apparently that has stayed, had done that four years ago. It's all been approved, or cleared or leased, et cetera. So it's just a matter of dusting that off. Donna and Jerry will come on. I don't know the exact details.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, Jerry, I just want to clarify the issue first. I see down on the road, I don't know, Passaic Lake, there was somebody coming saying, I want to have a tax sale on Armory Court.
Well, during COVID times, no one's having tax sales.
No, no, I, I, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, you don't know, she is, you know, she's going to get that wild hair across her butt. She's going to say, I want, I want that on record. And then it's going to connect us, or you let Daily Grind in there. Which is a totally different situation. We have, we should make a note of that. Because right now, they're in, they're, they're, financially, they need the business. And that's the only way we can get it.
I will find out the exact need construction of their permission to use that public owned space and arm everybody with that information as a property.
I just, I just don't want people at Point Dose to say, well, you're playing fair. Because we're, we're trying to help out the local business management, is what we're doing.
It's temporary.
Correct. The place.
Yes.
It's for food services.
It's tempting, yes.
Yes, with the pitchfork.
Oh, no, it's with the pitchfork.
Yeah, yep.
I think it was more, I think the pitchfork should apply for it. Because the Viking does not serve food. And they have a little window going to the pitchfork where he ordered blue churro.
It could be the pitchfork if he just called it the Viking.
Correct.
But he told me his conversation was with Ryder at the Viking. Because it's quite possible that's the property that, if, if the landlord is Viking, it's probably right.
Yeah.
And they're looking for outdoor alcohol.
Outdoor seating and outdoor alcohol and outdoor food.
But he cannot, he can't have outdoor alcohol.
The pitchfork doesn't have indoor seating.
Exactly.
No.
Right. But I believe there's ADA accessibility issues. The law says that you have to have accessible access to restaurants from the outdoor area. So that's one of the points that they're trying to work out.
Are you looking at that grant? One of the emails, I thought it ran, somewhere, it was talking about a mask grant.
So it just came out through time about a mask DOD grant for like sidewalks.
Right, sidewalks.
It was being on today for the, the Donna, kind of like, could you, Donna, see what you?
I talked to Donna at four o'clock today and she's looking into it. Yeah.
We didn't submit our CARES Act money under the CARES Act. So we've received some non-budget expenses related to this COVID finisher deal with COVID-19. And some rejection, so we, we did do that on time as well.
And we submitted the grant for the COVID-19 micro enterprise grant that was submitted today. Signed off on that paper.
That was a good question. Well, I think we're going to get some, I have a question.
Yeah.
That tobacco shop that's owned by guests, whatever.
Yes.
The pear shack.
Yeah.
They got benches and they got chairs set up out there. And people are just sitting on these benches with chairs smoking all around.
And it's first ever.
And I, I saw, last night I saw it in the joint. Now, do they need a permit to have this set up? But I, I would think they need a permit for a bench out there.
If it's on private property?
You don't want a sidewalk, no.
If it's on a public sidewalk, the answer I would imagine would be yes. We'll have Jerry take a look at it. My understanding was they are operating legitimately under their tobacco license and under their common, I never say that word correctly. Do you learn?
I do learn.
ADA license for retail, curbside retail only. That was my understanding of how they were operating.
Yes, they have a window.
Right, and now a bench.
Now, if that bench or that chair is on private property, there's, just off the top of my head, there is no restriction on a person sitting on a chair or a bench on private property smoking tobacco. Because the environmental tobacco regulations only kick in for public buildings or other buildings that are contained within the, the environmental regulation. Clubs, restaurants, I don't know exactly what our state, but it's generally what, what it would be. And we're not selling, but if they have an adult tobacco license that prevents people inside that facility to smoke tobacco with smoke ears. But that's, that's an inspection services question that we'll forward for that investigation.
So part of the discussion has been the licensing amendments. We're trying to get some of these amendments in front of the local licensing authority. Earlier this week, we saw that Pittsfield has moved to appointing one person to sign off on all the licensing amendments to make that a smoother and expedited process. We did forward that information to legal counsel, but with the suggestion that maybe we go to a two signature system to move some of the licenses and have the licensing committee members review the licensing amendments and sign off on them so that we're not having to scramble to put together meetings and trying to get the five of us in the room. My comfort level was having two of us review it. That was my personal comfort level and having two of us sign off on it. And I wanted to just bring that up as a discussion point to see if that's something that the board wanted to look at doing so that some of our businesses aren't having to wait for a week for our board to meet. And this week, we were able to have four meetings. But that's not necessarily sustainable for our board. And I don't want to hold anybody up from license, from alcohol license amendment or entertainment license amendment.
And that's strictly for the COVID reorder?
Yep, this would not be for permanent.
So if a new place comes in and wants to open up?
They'd go through the fold.
They'd go through the folder, right?
Yep, thank you for making that clarification.
That wasn't my clarification.
No, that was perfect.
Nope, it's just for this temporary period of time. So I open it up for discussion or feedback or with everyone's thought on that. Is the filing team, you're good with this or not? It would require a motion and a vote from the board. If no one wants to take any action on that, then we'll just do our best with the schedule that's in front of us.
All right. Would the board allow alcohol licensing subcommittee to sign off the amended alcohol, outdoor alcohol licensing for the COVID-19 reorder?
And a motion by Rick?
Not second.
Second by Jim. Was there a discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor. Aye. Anyone opposed? I'm in the same, okay.
Business as usual, really, basically.
Yeah, for most of it is. It's just clearing up some paperwork. So that was for the alcohol. Did you want to do a separate motion on entertainment?
What were that?
Just to be clear.
For entertainment, alcohol, outdoor?
Yes. Or you have to come before the full board?
And I did not oppose the motion. And what, when we have some for animals, you're all the reference.
I do know that Bounty Fair would like to have flipping bikes nights out on their patio. Which means others will start to think about live entertainment.
Right. You start getting into like waking, having outdoor entertainment. And you have a lot of neighbors. Bounty Fair, you got an empty parking lot, basically, out of neighbors. Or they have the one house.
Right.
Boundarily.
Somebody still has to look at that. And I know Jerry's talking to all of the business owners about that when he's there on inspection.
We've got the PNA, we're having issues all along. We're going to start working, go ahead and play outside.
They've got their poets, they, like, all of them will start with the entertainment license for outdoors.
So, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
With the alcohol, who can the alcohol license for our things? They can serve until two o'clock, mostly, mostly serve until 2:00 AM. The parts of this area is all being inside, no one's allowed outside to have any alcohol. Now, if they're allowed outside, they have alcohol consumption, you know, just looking at, you know, except if they're going to be at a table, have us a dinner, drink a beer. So having that to 2:00 AM, controlling people walking around, I'm just thinking back on the alcohol, oh, too, that should we have, you know, you have, the neighbors have a right now because it's changing, who's holding outside. So let's say, like you said, a PNA would say, oh, we would like to have a food. We'd go there and serve, I think we'd serve food there. But if they want, so they can't, they can't walk. Let's say you're a neighbor, for example. They don't serve food, so they wouldn't be coming here for a reason on their mission or what.
These, uh...
Then they come, they have their license, they can have outside, tricking their patients.
If they, if they prove that they have food service and it funds the forest code enforcement, their food operation, and he signs off on it, you have to have food in order to have alcohol.
Right, so they have to, we have PNA's, plus they do with the permit that was not given to me in Ketchum.
Correct.
So now we're just talking about areas with food.
Yes, yep.
And, but now we're adding on with the neighbors are going to have, you know, two o'clock, if people outside talking, you know, if you go in your house and somebody next door's on the fire, you're pretty much hearing what they're saying outside. So now I'm kind of thinking, step back, you know, I'd very, I'd vote. But I wouldn't vote on, on any entertainment unless the public had the opportunity, who live next door or in the vicinity, to say, I don't want people out there singing at one, one o'clock, one thirty, singing songs. We have inside, I don't hear them that as much.
So we can keep the entertainment as coming before the full board so we can have a, a conversation? That's why I just wanted to bring it up.
Even the alcohol, I'm kind of concerned most.
I will tell you. Sorry to cut you off, but I'm looking at these applications. Most of them are having a 9:00 PM end time because of the restaurants. Right, they've all decided to like cut their hours significantly. But like Daily Grind is until nine, I've got Pine Brook Pub until nine, AJ's until nine, Pizza House pending until eight o'clock, and Bounty Fair, um, ten, and then seven o'clock on Sundays. And even the Viking would be at 9:00 PM if he gets food and all the other things signed off.
Our quiet time is now is 10 o'clock, right? So I would think that would force 10 o'clock, holding, so to speak.
I've asked that question before about our, like, quiet hours? And I've been told that we don't have one.
I've been told that disturbing the peace is 24/7.
Yes.
That's what I thought. I thought, if your peace is being disturbed, it's disturbing the peace.
However, town council is on the phone and we can ask if there is a bylaw and if there's a time stated with the bylaw for the quiet hours.
I'd have to look that up, Christine, to be honest with you. I don't have it in front of me. I remember discussion in the past about time, timeframes and whatnot.
The last time I asked was when we received a letter complaining about the Christmas music from Dr. Bush's office. And I thought the answer was that we didn't really have quiet hours.
And that may, right, that, that may very well be true. I'd have to look at it again.
Okay.
I made it wrong, they were just discussing. I, I asked the chief when we were in the motorcycle, friends up on West Road, you know, because what was going on, people going nuts when you said three. It don't matter, it can disturb you at nine in the morning.
Yeah.
We try, it don't matter, it's disturbing the peace. But that might not be, that might not be the rule for what our laws to, it could be shut down, if I. But yeah, when we had the basketball case, I was on, uh, Nellows. It was, uh, Nellows, it's during the day, it's fine, you know, but they love to play basketball out there.
I see nothing specifically under chapter 76 of the bylaws under peace and good order. That would be the most obvious one, but I'm just keep looking.
See, the other one too with the, with the outdoor entertainment, the timer of power.
Yep.
Where they're set up, they're in the backyard, that's, that's a really important area there. Even if you had a guitar player out there, I think it'd be quite loud for all of the users.
So if anyone comes forward with an entertainment, an amendment to their entertainment license, we'll move that to the full board. So with the alcohol amendment, there'll be the licensing subcommittee who can just sign off.
And maybe next week.
That's what I'm hearing, right?
Maybe next week, if it was board, we could look at putting the 10 o'clock, you know, if you got a plan or something, get a noise.
For entertainment or for alcohol?
For alcohol.
Like a motion now, if you want it. There's, it's still the discretion and action on licensing amendments. You can make a second motion on, like, time.
Eventually, like, a little more than they call it.
Okay, that's, that's fine, too. So I'll put this on the agenda for next week.
I do not consider this like a very thorough search at all, but just a quick scan of the bylaws, the code, I can't find anything. But that doesn't mean that I can't.
Yeah, I'll also look into it. I'll have an answer for you either over the weekend or by Monday.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And you're busy lately.
I'm keeping it busy.
Yeah, that's what it's all about.
Yes, sir.
Anything else on that item? If not, I know that our first interview of the evening is here. I just wanted to remind everybody that I did send an email about midday today that our second candidate that we were going to interview today has withdrawn his name and application from the process. So we are only interviewing Troy Bacon today. I just wanted to remind everyone of that. So we could take a five minute recess if you wanted to. Or we can bring candidate in since he's already here.
Chief is here, he's ready to go. He's in the mahogany.
So, I hope I'll continue.
Continuing, okay. Everyone good and ready?
Right, starting to get a little bit.
Yep. It is a Friday night, so I do appreciate that you're all here.
Don't be helping me, I got a horse.
And I am hiring, what was the reasoning for?
He did not give one. He just sent me a message that, I can read it verbatim. Let me bring that up. Chairman Hoyt, please kindly remove my name from the list of applicants for the police chief hiring process. Please feel free to return any printed documents of my concern to my home address. Thank you very much, Jean Baker. That's all I got.
I just want to know if I can help the guy himself.
Oh, really?
If you know, like, four or five times, no, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello.
Hi there.
It's so awkward that we can't shake hands. I don't know, I'll just say hi and just consider that a handshake. So, just a weird time we're in right now.
It definitely is, and we welcome you. We also feel it's awkward that we can't shake your hand. I will tell you that we did wipe down the tables prior to the meeting starting, wiped down the water. But that is for you and it is safe. Hopefully the top doesn't taste like chloro, no, teasing. I did want to remind you, Troy, as we talked on the phone on Monday, this is a public meeting. So we do, so the meeting is being recorded as well. We do have two people participating remotely. One is Ed St. John, who is our town council. And the other is Deb Dunlap, who is our administrative assistant. So if anybody else should enter the virtual room, I will certainly let you know. I will let my colleagues know, just so everybody knows who's in the room.
Thank you.
I also will apologize upfront. I normally don't have a computer screen in front of me or handling technology while we're in an interview, but...
You're the controller.
See, I'm trying to control the room here physically. So I apologize upfront if it appears that I'm being rude. That is not my intention. So I'll put a name and face to the voice that you heard on the phone. I'm Christine Hoyt. I do, I would like everybody in the room to just go around and say their name. We do have some clackers in front of us with our names, but I'll just take that, takes the place of the handshake. Okay.
Hi, my name's Joan Ope. And thank you for putting your name in the hat.
Thank you.
Coming along to...
I'm Rick Wager. Joan Bush, Police Chair. And John LeVall. Tagerin, Town Administrator.
Great, great. Troy, hopefully the travel was okay?
I was up at 4:30 this morning, getting ready, on the road, flew to Philadelphia, short layover, then to Albany and into here.
Okay.
Had a little bit of downtime, not much. I, I did drink some coffee before I came, so hopefully as the interview goes, I'll get peppier. So we'll see what happens, but I was dragging a little bit.
Well, good, well, we're glad that you are here and made the trip. Just to let you know, we do have a series of questions. We've asked each of the candidates. So we'll ask our formal questions and then that'll probably take us about an hour and we should have some time for you to ask us some questions at the end.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll jump in. Troy, I know that you've seen the job posting and the information about the town, but if you could just generally tell us about how your professional experience and skillset has lined up with the duties and responsibilities for the chief of police here in the town of Adams? And what specifically makes you the right fit for our community?
Okay, when I saw the job posting, what really struck out to me was you're looking for someone that has a strong commitment and proven track record of community policing engagement. Looking for someone who is a good communicator, someone that has good interpersonal skills, that can collaborate with other city employees, department members, state agencies, local agencies, to tackle community problems that then may come up. And someone who is a strategic thinker. And when I read the job posting, I said, that's me. Kind of rewinding a little bit, I guess what drew me to this, to this, to put in was actually originally put in for the chief of police position. And you guys decided to go a different direction for now and got a letter that you were, you were putting in for, or that you were opening up for the interim job. So I wanted to put in for that. But I know some of you might be thinking, why did I put in for Massachusetts when I live in Indiana? But last September, myself and two friends, we hiked the Appalachian Trail from Salisbury, Connecticut, to the border of Massachusetts and Vermont. And on the way back, we came right through here. And I just fell in love with the place. And I got home and I told my wife, I said, you've got to see this place. This whole area is just beautiful. I have a minor in history from Purdue University, so I love the history component of Massachusetts and specifically this area. But I told my wife, I said, I got to bring you here at some point. But going back, just seeing, you know, all the things you have on, on the job posting, I've done, I've done successfully. If you want me to go into detail on all those things, I can, but I'm sure that'll come up later. But it just really honed in on me, it felt right, it felt good. You're looking for an interim chief of police to, to kind of hold down the fort, to make sure things don't, do go awry. That continues your operational excellence, that's something that I can do. What was the second part of the question?
This, why, what makes you the right fit for our community?
You know, all the things I've said before, but I think one thing also is that I have a deep appreciation for history, I have a deep appreciation for the environment. But I think what, one thing that makes me unique is, one, that I am a chief of police. You don't have to teach me how to do that. I know what the expectations are already. I know what it takes to make sure that your talent runs right until you do select a chief of police. And I think another benefit is that I'm not from here. I don't come with any expectations, I do come with expectations, but no agendas other than to see the talent succeed while the chief, the chief of police is picked. But I don't know anyone. And there's no preconceived notions, everyone gets a fresh start. So I think that's also a benefit to me as well and to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm the first questioner.
You're up.
Yeah, I'm up. In light of the ongoing protests taking place throughout our nation abroad regarding the death of George Floyd by overzealous law enforcement personnel, do you see policy, policing tactics, and racial stereotyping continuing? Will the powers that be relent, or will the same situation arise again? I ask this because there have been other racially charged and egregious actions undertaken by police officers resulting in the unwarranted deaths of Black Americans. Still, nothing has transpired to curb these happening. Please expound on your views and discuss how racial profiling can finally be put to rest. I strongly believe that all lives matter regardless of the color of one's skin or any attributes which one possesses. The world is big enough to accommodate everyone if the binders are allowed to be remote.
I agree with you. I agree with you. It's a big question, and I will try to answer that as thoroughly as I can. And if I, I don't answer any part of that, just, just remind me what it is. But I'm actually the, the only law enforcement professional in my county that came out publicly against what happened to George Floyd. I was on top of that right away. When I saw that, I couldn't even watch the video. I knew right then that that was horrible. There were tactics being used that should not have happened. Back in 2008, one of the first things that I did as chief of police is implement a policy of racial bias policing, treat everybody fair. That was before most departments were doing that. I think we did it even before the federal government reorganized their position, their policies. And we trained all of our officers on it. We, we did training on racial bias policing. We did training on how to treat people fair of all colors. So that's, that's not foreign to me. That's something that I, that I hold deeply within me, that we as police officers should treat everyone fairly. And I think in policing, we've come a long way. I think we're, we're at a point where we're starting to do those trainings. We're starting to change policy, but I think there's a lot more we can do. And I think a lot of things, or I think a lot that we can do is be very mindful of who we're hiring, not only at the patrol level, but your chiefs of police as well. Everyone has to be on the same page. And when you're not on the same page or someone's not trained appropriately in the tactics that they're using, then you run into situations that are absolutely horrible. So I'm on the same page as you on that feeling. I have a diverse family myself, so it means, it means something to me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Would you like to identify and discuss your experience in creating, reviewing, assessing law enforcement policy and procedures, agency directives, or general orders?
When I became chief of police, we did no community engagement activities, no community policing. We didn't do any of it, especially with our minority communities, our minority population. We're 30% Hispanic in our community, and we were doing nothing to, to engage them. Our policies were outdated. They, they were not following best practices, which not only put the, the community and city liable, or in a position of, of high liability, but the officers as well. And then we weren't training right either. So one of the things we did right away was I led a charge to change our policies, overhaul them, and start implementing policies that were aligned with best practices. It was time for us to catch up with what a lot of the other, time to catch up with what kind of everybody else is doing. That was a group effort to do that. We, we sat down with all of the officers, got an idea of what was going on, crafted policies that were, that they felt they needed to change to put us in line with best practices. We worked with our insurance company to craft policies that were, that mitigated risk as much as we could. Fast forward about four years later, maybe five, we, we redid our policies again. I know nobody wants to redo policies, but you know, sometimes when, when the times change, you have to change. And we started seeking accreditation as well, so we knew we had to change our policies. We went to a system called LexiPull, and LexiPull helped to review our policies, make them cleaner. We thought we were doing things with best practices, but we weren't all the way there yet. LexiPull got us there. Excuse me. What we also did was, part of that system is officers can now look at policy on their cellphone. So if you and I are working the street and we come up to a situation where we don't know what really we're supposed to be doing, which is okay, it happens, we can look at our cellphone and say, "This is what we need to be doing. This is how we need to handle the situation." Officers immediately have access to policies. What the system also does, that we really like, is you can have the best policies in the world, but unless you're training those policies, training for those policies, they mean nothing. And the system itself also does daily training bulletins. So monthly, you're doing use of force training. Monthly, we're doing de-escalation. Monthly, maybe verbal judo. Monthly, how to handle other situations. So it's a continual process, and the benefit of that for, for me as a chief is if you come up to me and say, "What are you guys doing for de-escalation? I don't think you're doing enough." Well, I love that question because we're training on it monthly, and we can generate those records for the public if they want. So, you know, long-winded, that's kind of, I hope answered your question. If not, okay.
So when you first started, you indicated that you worked at the policy change. What was the reception of the existing officers at the time, probably been there for many years? How did you deal with changing the policy? And the other part of it is, who approved that policy? Was it in the city? Was it the mayor, the council, or?
It has been my experience for over 20 years now that police officers don't always like change, and especially policy change. And the more you can, the more you can get those officers involved in policy change, the easier it is. Now, you're never going to make anybody happy, but what we did was we broke down our policies into like four or five subgroups, and I gave those to members of the department who wanted to actively participate in developing policy. Gave them a month, whatever timeframe it was, to look at it and be able to pencil in things and changes or X out things that we weren't doing, write in things we were doing better, or we were doing now that we weren't doing. And so we took that kind of collaborative approach to it, and that seemed to go over pretty well. Didn't make everyone happy, but some of our older officers didn't like the progressive change. But I think as we progress forward, everyone kind of bought in. But who approves our policies? How that works is, once they got approved at the lower level, they came to me and I would work with my staff. We changed those policies, put the wording in, took out things that weren't, wasn't relevant, and then took the whole package to the Board of Public Works of Safety. And the Board of Public Works of Safety in my city, and primarily Indiana, has the authority to approve all policies. So they had a couple months to review those. They read them, read them. The city attorney also had the opportunity to look at those, and then once they were approved, we gave a timeframe. I found you don't approve a policy on Friday and say it's effective Friday. You approve a policy and say, "Okay, we've got a week or two that everybody can read it, sign off that they read it." So the Board of Public Works is the authority, the policy approval authority.
How much experience have you had working with a collaborative bargaining unit? What do you consider the essential elements of effective labor management relations?
I don't have a, we don't have a union in the city of Frankfurt, but I will say back in 2010, I was the president of the local FOP, and we were having some management struggles. And I worked with the state FOP attorney to write and develop our collective bargaining agreement that we were going to present to the city of Frankfurt. And we presented that. I was in charge of that, and luckily we didn't have to, to go that far. They conceded. Everything got better, which was good, so we didn't have to go into the collective bargaining agreement. All the collective bargaining agreements I have seen, and I wasn't able to find yours, but all the ones that I, that I've seen, there's nothing in any collective bargaining agreement that I'm not familiar with. Seems like they're all kind of cookie cutter to some degree. Mine looks very similar to the ones that I, that I've seen. But what I would do is get to know the union reps, the bargaining, those, those reps to see what their expectations are. I think it's important, would be important for them to know what mine are as well, and work collaboratively. If something comes up, work with them to fix things, especially as your interim chief. I don't want to mess up anything or cause you any headaches. Wouldn't want to make sure that things are done smoothly. Now, I'm, I'm not a fool to believe that we're always going to see eye to eye, the, the, the union and myself, but certainly would try, and I would work collaboratively with them.
Okay, while training and experience, oh, I'm sorry, what training and experience do you have in developing and implementing services and programs for certain, for certain objectives that incorporate diversity?
Well, one of the things that I did early on in my career was I became certified as an Indiana Law Enforcement Academy instructor. So I've been able to develop training objectives that we've used in our department for years. Just recently, I decided to not be a trainer, just because my life got a little too busy. And, but in terms of, I think the last part of your question had to do with diversity. Yes. Is that in training or getting people involved in the training?
It's really your officers and training and diversity with your officers.
Okay, yeah, so it kind of goes back to his question. Developing policy, training on that policy, bias-based policing, treating everyone fair. We did extensive training. We used to have a training platform called Police One, where we could assign videos to officers as well, so they could watch them on duty. They were five to 10 minutes long. We really focused on LBGTQ training, how to not profile, profiling. We did a lot of that training, and we still do today. We think it's important, especially when we have such a huge minority population in our community, and, and visitors that come in our community as well. It's important to have that training. But, so that type of training is something worth a night work.
So Troy, I look at, on your resume, it looks like you have managed and developed a rather large budget for the Frankfurt Police Department. And so I will let you know what the numbers are here in the town of Adams. So the police department budget is about $1.8 million of our $16 million budget. And I think personnel makes up, Dave, what was that, 1.?
1.7 is personnel, a little over 100,000 is operating. Doesn't include capital for cruisers, et cetera.
Just for a frame of reference, but maybe you can talk to us a little bit and identify and discuss your budgeting experience, knowledge, and concept.
So in the city of Frankfurt, all the department heads are responsible for developing their own budgets. Typically, what I do is work with my staff to develop my budget. I give all the supervisors the opportunity to say, "This is what we'd like to see." They know what, they know best what they need to get the job done. So I would work with them to kind of compile a list, a list. It would be in, in, in a list of the most important to least important. And I would take that list and do a three to five year analysis of our budget and get an idea of where we stand. Once I got that down, look and see if the things that are on that list can be afforded. If not, then we scratch it off the list. But I think that three to five year analysis that I found pretty beneficial helps me understand where there's not, or we've traditionally not spent in certain line items, where we've overspent in some. And if I could say in a three to five year period that in line item for whatever, we have underspent by $4,000 traditionally, and I, and there's a, something that a supervisor needs that's $4,000, I can make that argument to the council that we don't need any more money. I just move monies. And same way with cutting, the, if you're, there's been times I've been asked to cut. Using that three to five year analysis, if I'm, if I'm overfunded in stationary, I would rather cut from stationary than cut from overtime, or cut from fuel, or those essential services that operate the police department. Once I get the budget done, that goes to my mayor and goes to our financial people. They look at it, digest it. We would have one-on-one meetings where the budgets that I prepared would be looked at, see if it could be afforded or not. If it can, then I run that by the city council. Where I'm at, we have committees on council called councilmatic committees. There are three people assigned to each department in the city. I have three. And I would take the budget to them, answer any questions that they have before I present it to the entire council, go before the entire council, and be ready to justify any increases that I've made to the budget, be able to justify any additions or, or special projects we want to do. And hopefully that I do, hopefully I do a good enough job where they approve my budget and we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go again. As a lifelong resident of Adams, I have witnessed the evolution of our police department. I vividly remember as a young man, the officers walking the streets and addressing you as you passed by. The nightly rounds to stores to check their, check their security. The writing of tickets for expired parking meters. In short, the Adams Police had a physical presence, and you knew who they were. Times have changed. They always do. No longer do the town's police officers walk the beat. They drive their cruisers to accomplish their task. No longer do they check stores after closing. Instead, they shine a spotlight on the business facade and move on. No longer do they write parking tickets for meter violations. We needed to add a town position to make this transaction. I must admit that I cannot put a name to a face of all of our police officers. What is your take on policing, which I term resident-friendly?
Well, there definitely has been a change in policing over the last 20 years that I've, I've been on. I remember checking doors on businesses. I remember doing those things you described. And I think as time has progressed and policing, so much has been asked of us that we might not traditionally be equipped to do. I've seen a huge increase on the demand for us to handle social services. Where 20 years ago, there were people to take care of that. The funding at the state level is not there anymore, so they give it to the police department. If there is a suicidal call, someone who is depressed or whatever, the police don't handle that. We're used to, we could call EMS, or we, there were other situations that we could handle that. There are definitely challenges today that prevent us from being able to do a lot of the things that you just described and I used to do 20 years ago. With that said though, I'm confident the Adams Police Department is very similar to mine. We are busy. We have a high demand. We want to make sure that we provide excellent service to our community. But we're not always busy. And you can strategically put yourself in places where I might see you. We have computers in our cars, and one of the very first things that I did is I wanted officers to be out. I didn't want us to be proactive, or reactive. I wanted us to be proactive. I wanted us to be visible. Even if you're in a parking lot across the street typing your report, you are still visible to the public. If you're walking down the street, I can say, "Joe, how are you today?" "Doing good, great." We can still have that conversation. That's, that's a positive community engagement. It's little things like that, providing and creating opportunities for officers to have those moments that they didn't used to have. One thing we started was foot patrols. That does two things. That helps decrease crime in certain areas we've identified as high crime areas, or we would do foot patrols in the library where juveniles would hang out. You're not only doing it to deter crime, but you're also providing an opportunity to engage your community. So there are things that you can do that we've done successfully. But that's a tough question for me to answer because I don't know specifically the call boy you hear. I don't know specifically all of the challenges that the officers here face. So that's a challenging question for me. But I can say, in my community, we've been able to look at some of that and make a positive change. Where we've kind of gone back a little bit to that old school policing while still staying modern at the same time.
May I just, a follow-up question is, how many police officers are hired in Frankfurt?
We have 34 total sworn.
34, okay, all right. And you said that 30% of the population is Hispanic?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what I can say here about Adams, having been here my whole life, is it's changed. It's become a mini multi pot. Now, I didn't see my first person of color till I was 10 years old. And I was active in sports, and we had a tournament, and you know, I saw my first black person. And Adams is changing. We have a transient population, and the familiar names that I grew up with, you know, are waning or are no longer here. So that's become, I think, a challenge for our police department because in the old days, you knew who was going to be drinking, and you'd go there and you'd pick them up and bring them home. But I just, you know, I just wanted to let you know that the diversity here is minor, but there is, it is changing, and I just want to bring that to your attention.
Yeah.
And I didn't bring that attention to any other person that was interviewed, but we have only you today, so I have a little more time to bring out some of the thoughts that I wanted to bring forward.
And maybe we'll get a chance to address how we tackled recruiting and how we diversified the department later, if it comes up. We did some pretty unique things. When I first... When I first started, every officer looked like me. Doesn't look like that anymore.
If you want to continue on that point?
Sure.
You have a couple of minutes if you wanted to talk about the?
Sure, yeah, so, well, going back to when I, when I first started as Chief of Police, it was evident that everyone looked like me. We had a community that was a diverse community, about 30% Hispanic, probably 8% African-American. We have a very small Asian community, but I knew that we needed to make that change. We had no women officers as well. And we started changing the way that we did recruiting. And my philosophy is recruit for diversity, but always hire the best person, because your community expects that and they deserve the best person. To recruit women, we started putting job announcements and flyers in places that we knew, how do I say this, qualified women applicants who were physically fit, who could do the job. We started putting those flyers in CrossFit boxes, gyms, ladies-only gyms, doing creative things like that, specifically targeting universities, their women's groups, making sure that they got that information. We, since I've been chief, we've hired three women. One is in Iraq right now, serving in the military. The other is still on, still with us. The third has, since retired, she had some personal issues that she, she needed to deal with. It was really heartbroken to see her leave, but we've hired two Hispanics, one Caucasian female. One of the ways that we targeted the Hispanic community was, the traditional way is to just put a job posting up or put it on social media. We started putting them in Spanish as well. Well, in Indiana, you have to speak English to be a police officer, you have to, but it doesn't say the parents have to, doesn't say the aunts and uncles have to. So we put it in spots that we knew people who, maybe who didn't speak English could read it and then tell someone who they knew was a qualified candidate to apply. We also put postings up in our Hispanic churches, did community outreach programs. We, another long story as well as what we did with our Hispanic community in terms of engagement, during those engagement opportunities and community meetings, we really pushed that we would love to have qualified Hispanic officers apply. The challenge in Indiana is you have to be a US citizen to be a police officer. So some of these kids that came over who would be great police officers will never have the opportunity to. There's other areas of the criminal justice system that we could, you know, have them in. When we hired two African-American officers, really that was just word of mouth on, on both of those. Good hires. One has since left. Caleb is still with us. Caleb was a track star at a nearby university, grew up in the high school, everybody knew him, so he was just a perfect fit. But you just have to change the way you do recruiting, especially now, and especially with the way millennials look at police work and what their expectations are of what the job is now. So I condensed it a little bit, but it's, we did some innovative things to change the way that we did recruiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope I'm not being too windy. If I am, just kind of cut me off.
Coffee's kicking in.
Yeah, I love it. Good. I was really worried. I was at the hotel, I was like, hey, I don't know if I can do this. I was trying to rehearse stuff, you know, I was going to say, or the questions that you were going to give me, and everything was cloudy and I was like, oh, this is not good. It's kicking in, you're right.
I'm good.
I think I'm good now.
I'm hungry, sleepy tonight.
Actually, there's nothing to do. Where did you get the hotel?
Actually, I didn't here. I had to go to Pittsfield. Yeah, I was really wanting to be here, that way I could spend the afternoon here, get some food, maybe talk to some people, but it was, I think because of the short notice, there was just no room, room here.
We're still in our reopening phase.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Pittsfield, 20 minutes down the road.
Not bad.
No.
I worked in Pittsfield most of my life, Mike.
Yeah.
Anyway, the Adams Police Department works closely with the Adams Fire Department, the Adams Force Warriors, EMS, Regional Emergency Management, and State Police, as well as community-based organizations. What has made you an effective collaborator in your current or past job?
I think two things, my commitment to public safety and two, my ability to communicate and network. I, I think it's extremely important for the Chief of Police to have connections in other departments and to develop relationships, that way you can train, that way you can develop MOUs, that way you know what everybody's going to do in the event of something bad happens. The time to develop relationship isn't when, when something bad happens, you've got to do that before. And I tell you, we, I've had the opportunity to work with some very good department heads and collaborate with them to, to come up with ideas to, like the fire department, we did a safer seniors program where we would go to a senior's house and do a kind of a quasi-inspection survey to identify things that they could do to improve the safety. Fire department would look at fire trip hazards and things like that. Work with the parks departments. We, the events that we have with the parks, we've collaborated with the parks departments for our National Night Out and other police events that we have. Our National Night Out events usually draw anywhere from 300 to 500 people. We partner with the United Way as well. The United Way will give away free backpacks because we do it in August, so that's right before school starts. So we get a ton of kids there who are giving out free backpacks of school supplies and things. They're there to see the police climb on all the cars, the street, or the street department worked with them to put up new street signs that flashed in areas that we knew were problematic, that kids would, that were school crossing zones. So I'm, I'm very familiar with working with other agencies and other city departments, but it's communication and commitment to public safety is really what my motivating and driving factor is.
Thinking about the regional collaborative nature in the police chief position, what does your experience work with the district attorney's office?
I have a really good relationship. In Indiana, we call them prosecutors. I have a really good relationship with our prosecutor. He has, he has my phone number, I have his, he knows where I live, I know where he lives. He was a former state trooper, so he has that mindset of an officer, but he knows that if there is an issue, that he can call me and that we'll take care of it. Or if something just doesn't seem right in the report, that maybe something's missing, doesn't seem right, and he can call me and feel comfortable that we'll look at it. And maybe the officer just didn't type it right. We can watch body camera and see that, that it's, it actually happened, it just, he or she didn't put a report right. If there's an arrest, it's not so good. He knows that he can call me and we'll take care of it. But you've got to have a good relationship with your, your district attorney. If you don't, it's been my experience that it can go very sour. I've seen that as growing up through the ranks as a sergeant and a lieutenant in my department, where chiefs of police didn't get along with the prosecutor and it just causes friction. Got to have a good relationship. You have to, because one thing that the district attorney can do is let you know when laws have changed, to give those law enforcement updates. That's one thing our prosecutor does, will come or send one of his deputies to do a law enforcement update for all of the officers, so we all know what changes in laws that are, or if there's a procedural change that needs to happen, we can implement that and make policy change. So bottom line is, got to have a good relationship with your district attorney.
The position of police chief requires a high degree of accountability. What does accountability mean to you in a legal sense with regard to data and metrics in terms of relations with the community?
What is accountability? I think accountability is kind of right up there with integrity almost. I have a high degree of integrity and I, and along with that, I think it's complement, it's brother or sister is accountability. You've got to hold yourself accountable first before you can hold anybody else accountable. And I'm a true professional in the sense that I operate within the bounds of the law. I operate within the parameters of policy. I'm not a stickler, I know that policy is policy, but sometimes things have to go a different way to, because it's the right thing to do. And I don't mean that in a way that you violate law. If a policy says, don't push a car out of the road, and you have to push the car out of the road, that's not a violation of policy to save someone's lives, push a car out of the road, even though policy does not to. But I think those, those two things go hand in hand. And I'm not afraid to hold someone accountable. I think accountability sometimes gets a bad rap, gets a bad tag on it. I think there's good accountability too. If you do something right, I'm going to hold you accountable, that you did something right and praise you for that. So I think sometimes we get stuck on the bad accountability, but we need to focus a little bit more on the good accountability too, and I've been able to do that.
I'm sure. I've asked this to others. In regards to measures and metrics, did your department, did you provide department metrics, measures to the mayor and the council for them to review, or did you not provide any? How did the council and the mayor have good understanding of how your firm was doing?
One of the areas that I excelled in during my master's degree study was statistics and analyzing numbers. I can't do math to save my life, but I can look at numbers and tell you what's going on. It's weird, I don't know, but.
That's why you're in law course.
Maybe, maybe. But prior to becoming Chief of Police, we did not do a very good job keeping track of what was going on in the department. We didn't report our uniform crime reports very well. It was very haphazardly done. If someone remembered it got done. When I became Chief of Police, I wanted to make sure we were able to provide good, solid numbers, because I feel it's important to have that transparency with your community. I know numbers. And if someone said, hey, how many traffic stops did we make this month, or how many tickets, or whatever, I could always rattle those off because I looked at them. It was important for me to look at them. I think it's important for the chief to know those numbers, to be able to communicate that. One of the things that we did was, we were busy, if we could do quarterly reports, sometimes we would, but always did year-end reports to the community. You can find those press releases, they're out there, that we would send out to our community, let them know what we did, how many arrests we made, drug arrests, how many calls for service, traffic stops. We also took, we also kept records of demographics as well, of who was getting stopped, who was getting tickets, who was getting arrested. So did a lot of that. Anytime a council member asked for a report, we got it for them. We were a growing community. The mayor would always want numbers from the police department, that way he could take economic development meetings to try to show people, hey, this is what the police department's doing. Yeah, so I, it's not something that I'm born to, I know how to do that, numbers are my, my thing.
So those are our formal questions, but I will open it up to the board. Troy travels quite a ways, to ask you any follow-up questions. Go ahead, Rick, I know you've got a burning hatred.
On the resume, all your law enforcement is in Indiana.
Yep.
Do you know what's going to be required of you to become certified?
Yes.
Officer badge?
Yes, so if, I'm fortunate enough to, to be designated your interim Chief of Police, I'll work with the county administrator and we will file for an exemption. There's a form actually on the Massachusetts law enforcement website. We fill that out, we send that in. I'm pretty confident with my background and experience, I will have no problem with that exemption. And there's some timeframes where you have to get training done, and I'm not sure that I'll be here long enough, depending upon if you like me or not, be here long enough to need to go to training beyond that, but certainly it's not something that I would feel I couldn't do. So I have looked at that. Not too indefinitely, I think the first call after, if I get this job, after I call my wife, the excitement will be to figure out how we can get that exemption done as quickly as possible.
Now, you're currently the Chief of Police still, right?
I am. In December, I made a declaration that I would be retiring June 30th, which I think is when your chief is retiring, so that kind of fits pretty well. But, yeah, so, and then COVID hit, slowed my whole life down. You know, you think you have a plan going forward and then the whole country goes on a shutdown forever, and, but I'm slugging through it and really looking for a department that I can start the next chapter of my life, an apartment that I can come and work and really help, and looking for a community not just to live in, but to be a part of. That's really important to my wife and I and our, and my youngest daughter, my, I have two older daughters, I don't know if they would come here, probably my middle would, but, but really a community that we can be a part of. I think it's extremely important for a chief of police to be deeply involved in a community, because for me, it's been my experience, if you don't know what's going on in your community, you can't make good decisions. You can't make good decisions for your community and you can't make good decisions for your officers. My wife is deeply involved in our community like I am, and she's actually the Community Development Director of our city. So our whole, our whole family is community, community-minded. So, I don't know, I think I kind of went off on a little bit of a tangent, but hopefully I answered that. I can get long-winded, I like to talk, I really do, especially when it's about officers. I'll go on forever about, you know, the department championing the department.
Matt, sure. Troy, can you just go over a little bit, you talked a lot, a lot of our questions for administration, can you just go over a little bit about your experience maybe with the nuts and bolts of the lean and narcotic gang task force? I've noticed you've got some of that in the resume, yeah, just flush that out a little bit for us.
Back in 2006, I was patrolling a pretty rough neighborhood in our city. I was a sergeant at the time, it was about 11 o'clock at night, and it was, it was a section of our city that was higher in crime than most, and I was a young sergeant and that's where I was going to be. And I was patrolling, I was on Freeman Street, turned north on Third Street, and as I turned on Third Street, there was a car about a block and a half away that was shooting at another house. It was a, it was a gang drive-by. And I thought, and this is a long story, but I'll, I'll get to your question. And at that point, as an officer, I didn't know what to do other than turn my lights on to draw all that attention to me. That way, the people they were shooting at would have a fighting chance to get the heck out of there. Now, it was the Latin Kings shooting at the 13th, they'd been wanting to shoot at them for a while, but the Latin Kings had been wanting to shoot at the police officer as well, too. And five people shot at me at the same time, missed the first time. They turned and I went after him and slowly, and I thought they'd gotten away, but I saw the brake lights and I knew right then, ugh, and my car just got, it got shot and it got lit up. And I got out of there and my car caught on fire, it was a big deal, we arrested everybody in prison and everything, but anyways, that, shortly thereafter, we, we decided to form a gang task force. And I was one of the people who were first to volunteer, not out of vengeance, but I knew that we had a problem that we needed to take care of. And myself and another officer under the direction of the narcotics captain at the time formed a team. It was more of an intelligence gathering, it really wasn't so what you see on TV or any major city, it was really intelligence-based and trying to figure out who was involved and so forth. So we did that for a while, arrested all the people that were, were involved in my shooting. They're all, most of them, a couple of them were put in, their licenses for a couple of them because they actually killed some other people, but, but that fizzled out. We no longer have a gang task force because we did such a good job, I think, on patrol, of being visible in the areas that we knew we needed to be, taking care of problems, working with the community and identifying the people who were gaining them, because the community was scared of them too. So we just don't have that problem anymore. And I had a, I had a Hispanic pastor come up to me about six, seven years ago and say, chief, you're doing, you guys are doing a great job being visible in the neighborhood, especially the minority neighborhoods, don't stop, because the day you stop, those gangs will come back. Please don't stop. I said, we're not going to stop, we're not going to do it. Narcotics, we kind of had a quasi-narcotics division for most of my career, where the narcotics officer also doubled as an investigator, criminal investigator. Yet about three years ago, I made the decision to go ahead and make a full-time dedicated team. We had the narcotics captain and he has one person under him and a couple other patrol officers who aspire to be narcotics officers work with him as well, and a K-9, whatever K-9 units would work with him. It's a dedicated team that don't do anything but drugs, and they do a really good job communicating to the patrol officers where they're going to be at, if it's a low-level investigation, they'll give to the sergeant, lieutenant, say, hey, you guys can have this, just watch the house, this is the guy's looking at, this is the car that they normally drive, and the drugs and blah, 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 and then they make the arrest. But having a dedicated team really helps us focus in on a pretty significant problem because. Because drugs in our city, I would say, at best guess fuels about 80% of the crime. From low level theft, you know, those break into the cars, when the change is stolen, there's a reason for that. So we really, we really made a concerted effort to address that problem. We're uniquely positioned, really in between Indianapolis, the city of Lafayette and Chicago. We have drugs that comes through our neighborhoods. We had, we had a position about seven, eight years ago where we, we put an officer on the interstate. We had an interstate team that was coordinated by the DEA. We had partners with the Boone County Sheriff's Office, Clint County Sheriff's Office, Lafayette, all the counties. From about typically New County, which is kind of north of me, all the way to Indy. Everyone was working the interstate. And the intelligence that we got, that the drugs that were going from Chicago through our community to Indianapolis slowed tremendously. Because we were out there. And there were, there were loads of drugs waiting in Chicago because they were scared to come through our counties. That was, that was pretty positive. We since had to disband it. We had some complaints that a marked Franklin police car was on the interstate. We had to pull that. Didn't, I wish we wouldn't have. But so yeah, I think if you have the personnel and the resources to do it, I think it's really good. But if you don't have the personnel and resources to do it, there's some things that you can do. Because I guarantee there's officers at Adams that wants to get involved in drugs, enforcing their drugs. And you can do some things strategically on patrol or maybe provide some overtime opportunities. Or get grant opportunities to fund those projects to allow them to do that. And that's one of the things that I've learned with the millennial, which I absolutely get along with. I don't know what people are talking about. I have no problem with my millennial officers. I hired half my department. They're all millennials. But one thing they do like is to be stimulated. They like activity, they like stuff. And it presents a pretty significant challenge for a department that's my size and your size. And you have to get creative. And some of that comes from grant funding. And you just have to know where to look and the grants to get. And the things that you can do program wise to be able to fund that and to stimulate and create that energy that you need to create to keep them here. So gangs, narcotics, was there anything else? But one of the cool things is that we, when we made that separate, unique division, we kind of renamed it to the Clint County Drug Task Force. And now the county deputies, there's select deputies and K-9 officers who now report to our captain at the police department. And we work cohesively as one unit. There's no, you're a deputy and we're an officer. It's legitimately one unit that goes out and does, does a really good work.
Other questions? Troy, I'd ask this of all of our candidates, but you have traveled the furthest. So I want to make sure that you take some time to answer this. But is there something that you want to make sure that you didn't leave this room without telling us? Because like if we didn't ask you the question that you were hoping we would ask you, like now is your time to just share that piece of information or pieces of information.
How much time do I have?
You're still scheduled for...
One thing that, there's a couple of things I think that I would like to share because I'm very proud of what we've done. Going back to the conversation you and I had about not having any kind of community engagement whatsoever, especially with our minority community. Right away, when I became chief of police, I knew that there was an issue with the trust between our minority community, which is our Hispanic community, and the officers. I did an analysis of calls for service and looked at people who we could identify as Hispanic or Latino. And looked at how many times they were calling the police. They weren't. They weren't calling us. It's not because they weren't being victimized, they didn't trust us. And probably in part because we didn't have officers on a department that spoke Spanish. So we, I led an effort along with my officers to start a dialogue with our Hispanic community. We started doing community meetings in Spanish at churches, at a neutral place. The very first community meeting we had, I'll never forget it, this is a true story. I showed up, had my translator there, because I used to actually speak Spanish, but as the years have gone by, I've lost it. But I got to the church and I walked inside and there were only 20, there were 25 men there. No women, no kids, just men. And we did the meeting, talked about all kinds of community issues and things that we could do to partner, you know, all the things, build trust and all this stuff. And at the end, I asked the question, why are there only, or why are there just men here? And this is a true story. A guy stood up and he said, we all know each other in this room and we're all from New York. And he said, years ago, we went to a community meeting like this. We got inside, the door shut and INS came inside. And I said, that's not gonna happen here. Not in Frankfurt, Indiana. This is not what these meetings are for. And I challenged him. I said, I challenge all of you, so bring five people to the next room. Let's get the word out that I'm here for you, that I want to create a partnership. The Franklin Police Department cares about you. You're a valued member of our community. You mean, you mean something to us. So I challenged him, bring five people. And however many weeks later, two or three weeks later, we had another meeting at a much larger church. Thank goodness we had a much larger church because 250 people showed up. Men, women and children. And it was the very, it was the best community meeting that we'd ever had, ever. And I knew right then, we were, we were on the right path. And since then, we continue to have those meetings. And what was interesting, when we had probably a couple of years of meetings specifically for Hispanic community. The trend kind of was, towards the end of that two years, was we had many people say, we don't want Hispanic meetings anymore. We don't want Latino meetings. We just want community meetings. Because we want to, we want to, we want to now be a part of the community. We want to invite people in. We want to be, we want to feel welcome. You make us feel welcome as a police now. We want to feel welcome in our community. No problem. So we cut off the Hispanic meetings. We just had invited everybody to community meetings and they were hugely successful. And last February, I did another analysis. And I looked at the people who we could identify as Hispanic or Latino, how many times they were calling the police. It may not seem like a huge number, but there was a 20% increase. That's huge for us, for how low we were to where we've come. And because of those relationships, not only with our Hispanic community, but citywide, we've had a 30% decrease in crime. The partnerships and trust with, between the police and the community have increased. I think we were able to recruit really good Hispanic, Latino officers because of those relationships that we have with our community now. We have a Hispanic pastor, a police chaplain on our, on our team now. Leo is a former police officer from Mexico. So he gets it. He knows what police work's about. He knows the challenges that we, that we face. He also knows the challenges that our Hispanic community faces. So he's a really good partner with us as well. So really, really proud of that. I could speak more highly of the officers and what they've done. You know, to pull over and play, play basketball with a group of kids or, or do whatever in one of our primarily Hispanic neighborhoods. That's, that's really been huge for us. There's a ton of other community projects we've done that's really helped us. But that one holds a special place in my heart, what we were able to do with, with the Hispanic and Latino population. Another one, I think, that I would say that I'm pretty proud of was the technological advances that we made at the department. We were kind of in the dinosaur ages when I took over. We have been able to push ourselves light years ahead with body worn cameras, full implementation of body worn cameras. Our, the Lexipol system, having policies on our cell phones, computers in the cars, being able to sustain that. There's just a plethora of things. The detectives now have the surveillance equipment that they need to get the job done. Our narcotics detectives, they have the stuff that they need to get the job done. We completely just tech the whole department. And what the cool thing is, those millennial guys, they know how to run all that stuff. So that was easy for me. You buy it and say, here, figure this out. And they figure it out and they'll train everybody. The same way with our, our social media and communication and transparency. That was huge for me too. We overhauled the way that we communicate with our community. We overhauled our Facebook page. We overhauled Twitter. We overhauled and came, developed an Instagram page. We put press releases out like we never have before. Worn the community updates, road closures. And more importantly, what I think was really cool, is cool, is that we, we champion what we, the good things we do at the department. We create our own narrative and let people know, hey, this is a good department. We've got good men and women who work there. And we're really proud of that. We also, to help the communication, mass communication, we implemented the Nixle system. All these things, names are in my head. Nixle, which is a huge, I don't know if you guys have it here, but it's a public broadcast text or call system that you can, can, can buy. And we sent out all our press releases on that. And we, I guess the goal to having all these platforms of communication was to ensure that we're covering every base possible to get the information out to the public. Because in my experience, if you don't tell them what's going on, create your own narrative. And I don't think anybody who lives in Frankfurt can't say the Franklin Police Department doesn't over communicate. I mean, there's, there's people who will probably get alerted on Twitter, Facebook and a Nixle at the same time. Their phone just blows up. But we know they're getting the information that we're sending out. And it's a good, one good thing, kind of goes back to the drug question you had. Nixle, that platform that we have also provides for complete anonymous tipping. So if you are across the street from your house, you notice a lot of traffic in and out at night, people that you might think are suspected of dealing drugs or whatever. You can send an anonymous text and it is 100% anonymous. I cannot tell who sends that, but I can communicate with you. So I can reply to you, hey, we got it. We've assigned it to Detective Walker. He'll be getting in contact with you. And that has really helped us. You know, you can always have those tip lines, but people are always suspicious of those, that we're tracking phone numbers and things. But the Nixle system is really good, is really good because it is 100% anonymous. And we've had a lot of good traction on that. So technology, communications and our community engagement, that's, it's light years ahead of where we were when we started. I just, I just couldn't be prouder of everyone who helped us, helped us get us there.
You indicated earlier in the interview that the, your police department does not have, it's not unionized.
Yes.
And you talked about it was, department is unionized. So you've done some great things within the department and I think a lot of us can be done here. But what are your thoughts about working with unions that you might get some pushback, get some new ideas? Because it's like out there, you have a lot of, we're working together, probably good. And here, you have contracts that we had definitely problem.
I would be surprised if I didn't get pushed back on some things. I'm not naive enough to believe that I wouldn't. You know, I would say that if there is a positive, let's just say, community policing initiative that we want to do. That is positive for the police department, positive for the community, and does good things for everybody. And the union wants to push back, I would like to meet with someone, why? Why? Maybe they have a really good reason. And maybe we can't do what we wanted to do. Maybe we can only do half of that. You know, I'll give what we, I'll take what we can get. But I think it goes back to what I said earlier. It's good communication, knowing who the representatives are, understanding what their mission is. And it's obviously protecting the officers and upholding the contract. I would become well versed in the contract. But again, there's, there's really nothing that I've seen in any contract that is problematic. I would love to see yours. Because most of them give authority that I've seen to the chief of police to make program changes or to do things like that. That don't necessarily affect wage and pay and discipline and whatever. So I'd love to see yours, to see what, what the differences are. But I would probably guarantee, without looking at it, it was very similar to the one that we drafted with the state EOP attorneys. They're pretty much all the same. I guess that would be my approach. I'm not, I'm not scared of it. It doesn't make me nervous. I actually think it would be a neat experience. I wouldn't mind working with them.
Anything else? Did you have any questions about?
Yeah, one, what do you expect out of your next chief of police? Or next, or the interim chief of police, sorry.
We are treating the interim chief of police as almost as, well, it is our chief of police for the next six months.
Sure.
So with all this old authority and responsibility. For me, I'm looking for somebody to take a look at our policy, look and see if they are up to date. What needs to be updated, what needs to be changed to kind of bring us current. I'm also looking for somebody to look at the staffing. Are we appropriately staffed? Is the schedule set up correctly? And I say that because our overtime budget has gone over the last couple of years and trying to figure out why. And that just leads me to the next point of somebody who could be managing the budget over there. We are entering into some unprecedented times here in the town of Adams. With everything that's gone on with COVID, the state hasn't released their numbers. Which this board has made the decision to go to a 112 budget, which is going to make things very tight across the town. But it'll be very tight for the police department as well. So it's going to be more important than ever, in my opinion, to make sure that somebody is over there. Painting, managing every dollar for that department.
What schedule does the police department work now?
Four and two. Four and two. We have eleven patrolmen, one K-9 patrolman, one detective. We had a management lieutenant. And then we had three union sergeants. The department used to work with command staff with only a chief, four sergeants, one being a senior sergeant. We can jump on, you know, if you don't mind. We had a chief retired, 36 years of service. Lieutenant, similar years of service, retired. Patrolman, similar years of service.
This is all right now?
All right now. Good, retired. We only have two sergeants left. One sergeant has been the female sergeant, she's been with the department 25, 26 years, not closer to 30. And then after her was the next sergeant. He's probably well less than 10 years of service. So we need somebody to get in there and it's stable on a day to day basis. But take a look at the command staff, take a look at the command structure. See what needs to be done, take an assessment of, we have a tremendously young department, a lot of millennials. We have approximately, I believe, four officers who just came out of the academy combined in the last two years. Two of which literally just went out on the streets, back then, their retirement, graduation was February 14th in the academy. So they're all working. So we don't have season supervision on some shows. We have very young officers and that is the best. So we need somebody to take, take a look at that, take a look at all of them.
The four and two schedule can be, I don't want to cause any concern, anybody who's watching or alarmed. But it can be problematic. It can. We worked that about 19 years ago, not very long, but. Is that something that the union regulates or is the chief in charge of being able to change that?
Most of that is reserved for management rights. So there's a fairly long article, as you stated, it's called Article 2 nar, CDA. And it lists the management rights. They're very strong in terms of shift structure, all of that. A collaborative approach to change it would be the best. There's always a will, the union should, and the area union is not aggressive anyway. It just needs to be engaged, in my opinion, a little bit more, sit down at the table. But I believe the actual shift structure is reserved for the chief of police.
We, we used to work a schedule of five and three. And it got to the point where we were, we were having some overtime issues. You're always gonna have them when you lose people. And there's, you can't, it's inevitable unless you can come up with some sort of creative shuffling and management style. So we did a work study. We did this work study of how many calls officers were going on. We broke it down to what shift was going, you know, all that good stuff. And we realized that our five and three schedule was causing more problems than it was helping. Because it takes more people to staff that schedule. I would have to, we don't do, we don't work a four and two. I could do that study. But we knew in the long run, it wouldn't be able to sustain itself. And as we got more millennials on, again, I don't want to scare anybody who might be watching. But we did, we ended up actually going to 12 hour shifts. That was at the request of officers. Because, for two reasons. Oh, maybe one. Because a majority of our department are millennials. And millennials don't... and millennials don't mind working really hard for you, but they want to play really hard too. And I'm kind of that way too. I mean, I'll work real hard, then go hike or do something, whatever. See, I, I get along with millennials. They kind of, we drive up. But, so we made that change. We made that change to twelve hour shifts. We had some people who didn't like it. I don't know if they like it today or not, but they're not vocal anymore. I think those, the people like every other weekend off. We do a five and two rotation, five and two and then two and five. And they're only working 180 days a year. Yeah, they're working 12 hours, but they get every other weekend off and they get days off in the week to see their family that they didn't normally get. Not saying that that's the right schedule for you. I'm just saying there's ways of looking at those configurations to see what really works best for the amount of people that you have. And I think you mentioned, or someone did about a collaborative approach. It's always good to get the officer's input. And I think that's one of those things that you can learn as a new chief of police or interim chief of police, those first few weeks or months when you're riding with those officers and talking with them and getting to know really what's going on, what they would like to see, what they'd like to see changed. Putting a bug in their ear about some things, those are beneficial times. So those, absolutely. And when we went to twelve hour shifts, our, our overtime, we hardly have overtime anymore. It's, it's pretty much gone. Everyone likes, it's because they have so many days off now. Nobody has to call in sick. Nobody's taking a vacation day. They get so many days off, they're happy. So they're at work all the time. We probably have, if I remember correctly, of our budget, I think our overtime budget isn't huge. It's somewhere in the ballpark. It fluctuates a little bit from 100,000 to 80,000. But we'll regularly turn back in 25, 30,000? The council's really good at keeping that in there because you never know what's going to happen. One lost kid or a major incident, your overtime budget's over. But we give money back in overtime. And that's because they like the schedule. And I think because of the schedule and some other things we did them around schedule, around time.
Now you asked the board for what they would like to see in their, in their future.
Yes.
Police chief or the intern one, so hopefully the board will respond. Uh, for me is, and the, and the, and our chair has indicated that the policy of the police department that the board has not seen until recent, I've been on the board for eight years. I was on a school community for 17, the policy man, everything we did.
What did?
Policy did.
Okay.
It all documented, superintendent what to do, principal what to do. And then the interim operations for their, yeah, buildings. And we, I still have a deep thought.
A lot of people ride in, you know, they go into the business and they're riding bicycles. It's a great opportunity to get out and talk to people.
Which it is.
And, and I understand that crime has changed and, you know, it's, it's different now than when we were cruisers and, and, and as we've been told, so we support, but it'd just be great to get people. And I mean, it's not until baseball, Joe said, I, I remember saying the same thing, I wish you'd come back. But just get them out there, just to meet people, so much time comes or if there's any problems or issues that may arise, you got to have a nose where they support you.
Yep.
Or, you know, if they all walk, see them, they don't know who you are.
You're, you're right, and one of the, we, we face, and still do, quite frankly, um, a very similar challenge with our bicycle patrol. We have state-of-the-art, brand-new bikes, uh, that were donated to us, the community paid for them. They don't get ridden as much as we'd like to. Oftentimes, that's because you are short-staffed, you don't have the time to do it, because the demand is really the call-to-service. The demand is making sure you're in the neighborhoods, running from call to call to call to call. So, those opportunities sometimes shrink. And, again, that comes back to being able to be crafty, and, um, maybe there's, there's grant opportunities for, for, I know that there's grant opportunities for community policing. There's federal grants for that. Can we, can we make something, or can we, can we get a grant approved, um, that allows those officers to work off-duty? At time and a half, double time, the grant, however you write it, to be able to not only earn good money, but get out and get some exercise, get some fresh air and meet people. So those, I understand what you're saying. I know sometimes it seems like, ah, the officers don't want to engage, but it might be other things that are contributing to that. So that would be interesting to see what, what that is. And, again, maybe it's also, and no disrespect to anybody at the department, you also, but you have to have somebody championing that. Um, especially events, Fourth of July, uh, we have big citywide parades and we have a huge hot dog festival. Frankfurt Hot Dog Festival, you guys should come, it's, uh, it's canceled this year, next July I'd come. But, um, but, but it's not unusual to see me on a bicycle. If you, if you do your research and look at my Twitter page, I'll be on a patrol bike, riding in the parade, going, doing events, greeting people, as chief of police, because it's important, I feel it's important to do that. And you have to take lead on that. That way the officers know that it's important. It's not just a biking, it's, it's important, and it's not just important to the, the department, but it's important to the community. They, they want to do that. And I think also, ultimately, sometimes we decide that we work for the community. Um, if they want to see more of us, let's give more of us, in a positive way. But I, I totally understand, in fact, I get that, we're facing the same thing. We really are. Yep.
Well, want to answer?
Yeah, I, uh, I kind of remember the girl being a little differently. I remember stopping on Park Street to tie her shoe, and there'd be a cop there in the side, telling her, move along, move along. Good select order didn't want to kiss her, uh, partner. But, uh...
Somehow I kind of figured the conversation was going that way, with, with you, for some reason, I don't know. You had that little smirk, you know, glimmer in your eye.
No, no, I mean, yeah, yeah, yeah. He's just like chasing that girl. But, I'm looking for a chief. And I'm not saying the last chief, or the last chiefs or whatever.
Sure, yep.
I want something to be around that corner office. You know, engage with the officers, talk to the officers, so the only interaction isn't when there's a problem.
Yep.
Uh, I do like more transparency when it comes to the community. Everything has been kind of tight with, oh, it's a game problem. Right? Since when? You know, all this has been happening for years. So, how come nobody's ever heard of it?
Morning.
Or this is happening, or that is happening. I feel so proud that it didn't want to panic the population. Why? And they also like to cause a little more, uh, observation from the rest of the community, if they would, if they could.
Sure.
And of course, I gotta give you a fair warning. Small town, a lot of know-it-alls. And there are certain Facebook pages, you, I better all just stay away.
That is not, that, that's everywhere, trust me, everywhere. But going back to your, your point about a chief of police sitting in his office, in, or her office. It's so easy, um, to get, just, you know, you get something done, you're coming out of your office, someone runs up to you, "Chief, I need this, I need that," and then you're back in your office again. There's, there's ways of solving that, and one is delegating. Not in a bad way, but you delegate, that way you empower people to make decisions, so they can grow professionally and gain the confidence that they need, and it gives you some free time as a chief. But it's, it's so important for the chief of police not to be stuck in the office. I agree a hundred percent that the chief of police should be actively engaging officers every day. Chief of police should be actively engaging citizens every day. Um, if you all want engaged every day, the chief of police should be doing that. And if you're asking for it and it's not happening, you, you might have an issue. But it is, it's, it's, it's changed. Back, you know, the, the old days, the chief could sit in the office all day and nobody would say a word, because that's where he or she belonged, and they didn't want to be seen. It's different now. People want to see you out there. It's not unusual to see me on foot patrol or walking downtown in my city. It's not unusual to see me on patrol or backing up an officer on a traffic stop, or joining in on a search warrant. Hey, what can I do? Can I put up some tape? I know they don't want me in there. I'm the old guy who doesn't have the training they do, because they're young. But at least I'm there to help. I'm there to show support. So, or parades on a bicycle, it's, and you really have to work at it sometimes to get out of your office, because it's, it's safe there. It's safe in your office. It's safe to not have to be bombarded by all the, the criticism and, um, the, the Facebook messages, and it's just nice, it's comfortable, and there's the nest. It's, you have to get out of it, and you really have to work at it sometimes, even when it's not, not good out there. You gotta get out. But, uh, I, I do completely understand that. That, that's, I, that's something I believe in.
And one other, I like, I like to know what's going on. And for years, I've been saying, I, I hate reading on Facebook what's going on.
Yep.
You know, when somebody else should have maybe let us know that, hey, major incident, you're gonna get questioned. Because, I mean, sometimes it fall rain, or you're reading on Facebook that, oh, this is going on. Nice to hear that, so.
I, I think it's important, um, for a chief of police to be able to understand what you want to know and how you want to know. In my experience, for me, some council members like an email. Some like a text message. Some like me to call. Some like me to show up at their house. But as a chief, you have to understand what those, those lines of communication are and how they want that, and what they want. Um, and you learn that through just conversation. Having a cup of coffee with a, a council member or a city administrator, or just stopping by their office, or, or saying, hey, stop by the police station if you're, you're around, or, or I'll come to you, whatever. But you've got to have those conversations, and through those conversations, you understand what that level of communication is. If you're asking for a level of communication and you're not getting it, you might need to have a, have a sit-down with, with, with that chief of police.
So, or Jim, do you want to answer Troy's question about what you're looking for?
Well, I, I'd like to just, uh, voice my thoughts. As been mentioned, we have a lot of young officers, and you brought a very good point, that they like stuff happening, you know? And sometimes that can cause trouble with the police authority, because they may be just so eager to do something, and what they do isn't properly done, or it should have been staged differently. And I don't know if this happens, as Rick has mentioned, the communication is lax. And once again, maybe I'm showing my age, but, um, there used to be, in our transcript paper, which is no longer published, there was a police log, and you could read everything that had happened in the town. And, you know, now you hear things, I, I don't go on Facebook, I never have, I don't...
I wish I had never gone on Facebook.
Right, I stay away, I, I stay away from that. I don't, I don't like that, because it's just, uh, uh, nil for, you know, exaggeration.
Turning water to the bottom of water.
What's wrong, right. And another thing, in all aspects of life, communication is the big thing. You have to communicate.
It is.
If you're not a good communicator, nothing's gonna happen the way that you hope. And throughout my work career, I led by example, and I think that that's an important aspect of a police chief, is to lead by example. Of course, you have different obligations as a police chief, but I think that you need to nurture these, uh, you know, these young officers. As Jay mentioned, we don't really have anybody, we've lost our veterans, and sometimes, you know...
Tough.
Yeah, it, it's tough, but I don't know, because I don't know enough what goes on down there. Were they helping them, or were they trying to, you know, bring them forward and teach them, or were they just, you know, there for a paycheck?
Yep.
And, you know, that's hard to tell when the communication is lax. So, in short, I'm, I'm looking for a police chief that has knowledge, uh, is a good communicator, and most importantly, to me, I found in life, you gotta just give it your all.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that's what I'm looking for, a police chief.
You know, those, 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 uh, stimuli that, that keeps people happy, I think you learn what those are when you, when you have those conversations with your officers. It might not be traffic enforcement, it might not be drugs, it could be, you, we might have officers here that want to get on the bike, they just don't know how to get on the bike. Um, that's, you have those, those conversations. Uh, it's not always enforcement. But with that, though, I think that when smaller cities and towns, like mine and, and yours, we don't have the opportunities that Boston does, or Indianapolis does, we just don't, and we never will. You have to be realistic when you're recruiting. Don't promise them all these things that they're gonna be able to do. Be, be realistic with your recruits. This is what we have to offer. If you want to be a police officer in a nice community that supports community engagement, that is well-respected, that has an emphasis on accountability, has an emphasis on servant leadership and customer service, this is the place for you. If you're looking for, um, SWAT teams and rope teams and, um, all this stuff, this isn't for you. Because if you're not realistic in your recruiting, you're gonna hire someone that's only gonna be here for a couple of years, and then they're gonna go somewhere else to get what they thought they were going to get here. And it's, it's a point that's really trying to be pushed, I think, by police departments, especially at our size. Let's be realistic in our recruiting videos. Let's be realistic in our recruiting, um, flyers. Let's tell them what we have. You'll find people, we'll find people. But the people who want SWAT, the people who want the rope stuff, the people who want all the stuff they see on TV, they won't be applying here, and I don't want them to apply here, and you shouldn't either, because they won't be here. And if they are, they'll be very unhappy. So I think there's two components to that.
Yeah, and one thing I do like for your saying is about communication in neighborhood meetings. That's something that we've discussed at the board a little bit now, trying to get that going. I think it's pretty important to get out there, have meetings in the neighborhood. Um, three words I hate, I don't know. Now, I want to be able, somebody asked me a question, I want to be able to answer.
Sure.
With, 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 uh, community, neighborhood meetings, that we can accomplish that.
You're not always gonna be able to touch everybody. The expectation of everyone being informed is never gonna happen, but you can at least, uh, establish some platforms, some avenues of communication that gives them a better chance of hearing your information. One of the things that we did, we tried citywide community meetings. We opened up the commi, the very first community meeting we had at the city. We opened up the police department, cleaned it all up, and said, "Come on in. This is yours. This is your house. You're welcome in." And, uh, we took people on tours, we showed them the things that we could show them, things that we couldn't, we locked up. But we invited them into our house, and we had our very first community meeting. And it was good, but the problem seemed like people were from different areas of the city, had different concerns, and you were kind of battling back and forth, answering questions. So what we did was, our city's broken up into four areas of the districts. And we looked at the data in each one of those, and we would have, um, community meetings specifically in those areas. So we knew the northwest city, part of the city, area one, we, we, when we had those community meetings in that area, the data was specific to that, that neighborhood. We weren't talking about things that happened on the other side of town, because they don't care about that. They want to know what's going on in their neighborhood. So we came armed with that information. And we came armed with information how they could improve their, um, their properties, what, you know, planting flowers, painting your house, what that does to affect crime. We, we, we could more easily communicate that message when we broke it down to smaller groups, instead of having one giant community meeting. Uh, we, I don't know, you might be able to get, get away with it here, but my guess is, or having one big one, but my guess is breaking it up into sections where people hear the information that's specific to their neighborhood. I think you'll have much more success with that.
Thank you for being straight with us.
Thank you.
Do you have other questions?
Uh, timeline, uh, what, what's, uh, what's the expectation of letting someone know whether or not they, your next...
So we have interviewed, um, five candidates, uh, this is our fifth interview. Um, it is, uh, an expectation that we'll be having a discussion next week and being back in touch with each of the five candidates. Our police chief has extended his retirement date to July thirteenth. And, uh, would be available, he has indicated his availability past that date to help with some transition, if need be. Obviously, that would have to be negotiated with him still. But our board has been, um, is trying to move quickly through the process. I think as I explained to you on Monday when we talked, uh, we went with an interim route, because we didn't feel like we were able to do the process that we had, um, set up back in February. Which would involve a lot of community involvement, um, probably day-long and a couple of different interviews and, and so forth. But COVID, uh, has kind of took kibosh on all of that. For right now, so this is to get us through the next six months, and then post for the, um, permanent chief position during that time. So that's, uh, which we think would be probably like August-ish, as long as the reopening of Massachusetts continues to trend, um, positively, which so far is, so far so good. So that's kind of where we're at, with, with this interim decision. I, I can't speak to the board, but I do have it on the agenda for, uh, next Wednesday, for us to, um, talk about, to deliberate, and, uh, possibly make a decision, or make a decision for more interviews, or, or whatever it might be. So, um, but it is my commitment to all the candidates to be in touch with all five of you sometime next week, with where we're at in the process.
And when do you intend on hiring the permanent chief of police?
Hiring of the, um, permanent chief of police, I would think would be, uh, by the end of the calendar year. Because, again, we're hoping to post that job come August, and work September, October, depending on what their work or their employment situation might be, if it's a December or a January schedule. So, it's, it's still pretty fluid.
Yeah. Troy, you, you would apply for the permanent? I did.
Yeah, you did.
I did. There's no restriction. If you're, if the board chooses you for this job, there's no restrictions on, on, you know, so.
Yep. That help answer?
It does.
It's a little, still a little up in the air, because everything seems to be up in the air.
When are you, you're in town?
The end of this month.
End of the month?
Yep.
Yep. That would make you available in July.
I'm available.
Pending some relocation and so forth, but...
Yeah, I don't think that would be much of a problem, to be honest with you. I'm looking around. But it'd be kind of hard to find an apartment around here.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you.
Maybe somebody's garage that has a bed in it and a nice TV, I could live there for a few months, I don't know. I've, I've slept in a worse place than present.
You said you hiked, right? Is this the first time you've been into Berkshire? When you hiked, or have you been here before?
Yes, no, uh, um, my brother-in-law used to live in Boston, and I always wanted to go see him, and he now moved back to Indiana, but, no, we, we hiked all through here, and that was the first time, and, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not pulling your leg, I went home and told my wife, I said, "This place is beautiful." I said, "We could live here," and the, the, just the history and the architecture, and how nice everybody is, just feels, it's just, all the trees and the, the outdoor opportunities, I'm a huge outdoor person. I'm a high-altitude mountain climber as well. I've been all over the world, uh, been into China, and South America, Alaska, um, I've dangled off mountains, I, I've, I've flown today. And, uh, so the, just the whole vibe just really feels good to me.
Yeah. Well, it is a beautiful place.
It is.
I, I worked for the state of Massachusetts, as a force and park ranger, Tappanox, Great Lakes, for most of my career. Yep, so it is a beautiful area.
I didn't get to go to that coffee shop up there when I was there. I think it was closed, well, it was closed when I was there, we were there way too early. We were, we, 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 you know, coasted over the top of that thing real early in the morning, but, uh, maybe I'll get to go back and coffee there someday. In terms of history, you're sitting in Mr. Flunkett's mansion, this is what you're sitting in. Oh, okay. Uh, Berkshire Mills. Yes, he did. You may have heard of Berkshire Hathaway. Well, Berkshire Mills merged with the Hathaway Manufacturing Company, and that is what has evolved into today's Berkshire Hathaway. So, Adams is actually the birthplace of Berkshire Hathaway. And Mr. Flunkett owned the company, and this was his residence. It became our town hall in nineteen ninety-six. Yeah, I, I did a little research, I knew this was a, a mill community, and...
Yeah.
It is. I told my wife that.
Yeah.
And she, which she already knew. My wife reads like ten books a week, I'm dead serious, I don't have to pick one, I don't have to get through... Troy, tell us a little bit about your wife's community development director in Frankfurt. She is, um, so she was actually in insurance for twenty years, and, uh, very good at what she did, but after she ran it for twenty years, she kind of got stagnant, and, uh, there was a position that came available at our, at our suite. And I was having, um, a Coke or something, I don't know, a coffee, with our HR director, and he said, "Hey, we're, we have a position open," he goes, "Your wife has a great personality. She's very community-minded, she, uh, she writes well, he's seen some stuff that she's written, and he said, "Do you think she would be interested in the community development?" I don't know, I, I mean, she probably wouldn't be the most qualified person, um, because she's not certified and things like that, but, uh... So I went home and I said, I told Annie, I said, "Hey, there's a, Jack said that there's a position open," because she was wanting to get out of insurance, and, um, I said, "There's a position open, I don't know if you'd be interested in it, it's a community development director job, I can check it out." She said, "Really?" I could tell that, she's like, ooh. So she applied for it, and, uh, she got it, and she's doing a really good job. She does communications with the city, too. She does all the communications with, um, websites, the social media, all the press releases. It's kind of evolved with COVID. She's managing and helping support a new park downtown in the theater that we've created. Um, she's also working with, um, city administrators on our annexation to the interstate, and some of the additions that we have in our industrial park right now as well, so. She loves it, she does a really good job at it, but, um... How long has she been in the role? Over a year. Over a year.
Well, Troy, just, once again, thank you very much for making the trip, coming in. Um, it's, it's been nice to, to meet you and, and have a, a really nice conversation about this interim role and, um, your enthusiasm for that position.
Yeah, absolutely. Your coffee did fine. It did, I could tell. Weird guy, I mean, and I, and I was in front of a good crowd, too.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
As no one ever about our, uh...
You guys have been, you've been really well behaved today.
It was good. Am I the only out-of-state person that put in?
Oh, no, we had a couple from Connecticut.
Okay, okay. I was just gonna say, because everything's kind of crunched up here, so I figured you'd have a couple.
We have two from Connecticut.
Okay. So hopefully I made a good impression on your, being from Indiana.
I wanted to, I thought...
You should.
I'm a cat kid, I...
You, you should, there's all kinds of stuff, there's, every once in a while, we can get the Oscar Mayer, Oscar Mayer Wiener.
Oh, yeah, we do.
This thing is huge, you'd love it, especially next year, when the Prairie Creek Park opens up. I don't know if you're familiar with, uh, Matchbox Twenty?
Yeah.
But the, the guitarist is from my town, very much, so he comes back and plays and does a huge concert, and benefit concert and everything, so... Uh, last year was in the street, because the amphitheater wasn't finished yet. Next year will be finished, and it should be rocking, so, if, until, into July next year, if you want to come, go check, come check it out.
We got James Taylor and Arlo Guthrie.
I like James Taylor.
Yeah, he's lived through down the road.
Right down the road, man. But if, if you have any follow-up questions, or something that maybe didn't seem clear, you have my phone number, you're free to share with, with everyone, so...
It's on your contact info, they have all of your, um, you have your email, your phone, and even your Twitter handle.
Yeah, give me a follow.
And, uh, just have a safer trip back.
It's in the pilot's hand, so it's...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We'll see what happens, but, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Perfect. And I would shake your hands, but I can't. Just, uh, just know that I would if I could.
God bless.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, we can talk about next steps. Um, I put it on the agenda for next Wednesday, for, um, sensitively for deliberation and decision. However, if, by, I think, Monday, if you want to take the weekend and think about it, if on Monday you want to maybe have another follow-up conversation with any or some of the candidates, I don't know. Like, I don't know how anyone's feeling, I know we've seen five people over the course of three days. That's a lot of information, so I just want to make sure that we're careful in our decisions. If you want more time with a candidate, or if you want to make a decision next Wednesday, it's a good time for us to talk about that.
Personally, I don't think we need to have another problem.
Okay.
I think you got enough out of it. I think it's where I've been five in a row, and I, it all stole my mind.
Good.
Yeah, because usually what happens, people regurgitate the same questions, and you hear the same, you know, back-and-forth, uh, dialogue.
Good, so are you comfortable if I put this on the agenda for next Wednesday for deliberation?
Yeah, I think the time is, uh, of the essence.
Yes, it is. Um, my understanding that, um, today was the last day in the office for Chief Tarso, and he will be taking some, uh, earned vacation time, um, but available, uh, by phone. Uh, so if anything should come up, he is still available, but just not in the office.
Who's in charge?
Uh, it is, uh, my understanding is the two sergeants, so Sergeant Malloy and Sergeant Price. We're in charge right now. I also just wanted to share, um, uh, we had met with, uh, Jeff Coe earlier this week. A gentleman from Dalton, who's doing his paper today, they're continuing on with the training process in Dalton. Jay and I attended, because it was going to be open to the public, it had been canceled. Uh, what Jeff wants communicated to the board is that, uh, he has been, uh, fully exonerated from that process. And he is in the process of receiving a letter from the town indicating that, uh, the, that they aren't necessarily going to be working together any longer, but it is at no fault to anything that he has done. So, when that letter is provided, um, to the town administrator, he will forward that on. So that, he just wanted to make sure he closed that loop with our board, since he has brought that information forward during his interview. Um, but that process has ended, and he has been found to not have done any wrongdoing, um, and has been cleared in that process. So I just want to make sure that that...
Just out of curiosity, what was your reasoning for going, even, uh...
It was open to the public, and I wanted to know where that, where that brought it in, um, having...
We could have, okay, yeah, all right, that's fine.
I read it at eight o'clock this morning in the evening.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a ten o'clock meeting, um, so I took it upon myself. I called Jay and said, "Do you, do you want to go?" And so he said, "Maybe we should." My, uh, feeling has been, I can't necessarily trust what's in the newspaper, um, to accurately report something, and I knew time was of the essence, and I didn't want to wait until tomorrow's newspaper to arrive to know what was going on. So, yes, I took it upon myself, because I read that it was open to the public, so anyone else could have done the same. So that's, are there any other questions, um, about the interim police chief process? Anything that you needed from any of the other candidates? Good as the order, I have one item, and then I'll turn it over to anybody else who has any items for good as the order. I did receive an email today indicating that the, uh, trail work will begin on June twenty-second. So initially, they had sent an email saying it wouldn't be before June fifteenth, um, but they indicated that that will start on Monday, June twenty-second, and they will be in touch, uh, with the town, uh, at some point next week, to just talk through that a little bit more, but just so that you're all informed. Uh, that was late this afternoon that came in. Does anyone else have anything for good as the order? John?
I do.
Jim? Rick? Joe?
Joe.
Okay, um, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And a motion by Rick, and a second by Jim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, anyone opposed? All right. I'll see you all next Wednesday, June seventeenth, it'll be a seven PM meeting, uh, regular meeting. All right, thanks, Ed, thanks, Deb.
Good night, have a nice weekend.
Have a nice weekend.
Bye.
Later.